I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comments this evening, so we will move on to the consent agenda. There is one small modification to the city's consent agenda. Major Bailey.
Item number 5.4 asks for your consideration of purchase of vehicles for the fire department. In conversation today with Assistant Chief Dennis Johnson, as well as the only bidder on those vehicles, it was determined that four are not available. And so what we are going to do is change the request for purchase just to one vehicle at this time, and we will then be going out and seeking new bids for three other vehicles. This is all due to the shortage of vehicles in and around the area, especially trucks. And so there are only one available at that point. So the request denied is for one instead of four.
Counselor Ryan, I'd like to start with item number 5.5.
Motion to pull 5.5 to the consent agenda.
I'll make a little back and forth.
A second. So moving on is consent agenda that contains minutes from the last regular council meetings, claims, current and pre-written. Item 5.3, which is approval of CBDG grants for Clarksville small businesses. And then item 5.4, which has been modified to one vehicle. Discussion, Councilman Mustang.
Mr. President, I think we would be remiss to not mention the CBDG grants for the Clarksville small business and acknowledge that's willingness to work and to get that for us. A total now of, my understanding, $750,000. And I would like to publicly say thank to the staff, and I'm proud to be a part of this community that has done so much for the small businesses. With that, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for Councilman Mustang?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Boyer. Major Bailey will call vote, please.
Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That item is approved 6-0.
Now we will separately on item 5.5, which is approval of forgivable loan agreement with City Integrated Manufacturing Services, Inc.
Niglin, they negotiate doing business as City Integrated Manufacturing Services, Inc. is a high-tech manufacturing company that is establishing a headquarters of production facility at 1513 Lynch Lane, Barstow. The company is investing $3.6 million into the facility and will produce 30 jobs with an average wage commitment of at least $18.43. The state of Indiana's Economic Development Corporation has committed up to $225,000 in credits for the project contingent on their mani-able commitment. Town staff have evaluated the project and proposing to dedicate up to $95,000 as an incentive. This amount is broken down as $15,000 upfront cash injection and $80,000 structured as tax credit based upon job creation and performance of the business over the next five years. The recommendation is to approve a forgivable loan agreement with City Integrated Manufacturing, Incorporated, with an amount of $95,000.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Boyer.
Actually, I'd like to ask Niglin for a question in reference to, on page two, where it says different items that they cannot, it does not include the company's employer's share. Does that also include the stock options? Or would that include, like, would that, how to say that, not include stock options as a form of a wage?
Page two.
I don't have a bill on the agreement. I don't believe this is a publicly traded company. I don't think they have stock options.
I didn't know if it was something that may come up in the future, that would be an issue that we actually should look into. I know it says in all other payments of wages, it would be excluded, the health, the social security, the insurance, those type of benefits. And I know that might be considered benefit, but it also could be considered wage. So I didn't know if that would be something that would be.
I think the employment wage is considered for just the hourly wages. That's only considered in the actual benefits. So would that be healthcare or any of the benefits?
Okay. Other than that, I think the agreement for the $15,000 out of the forgivable loan on front is making along with the other $80,000 that's not given to them, you know, right away. But they actually have to bring something to us, support it, give something in return. And I think this is a prime example of something that's very well worth. I really appreciate your time, and I hope that you put into this. So thank you. On that, if there's any other discussion, but I'd like to make the motion to approve the forgivable loan for the City Integrated Manufacturing, Incorporated.
Also.
Motion, Councilwoman Boyer, and a second, Councilwoman Gilkey. Roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That item is approved 6-0 as well.
Move on to new business. First item letter, new business is ordinance 2021 Z05, admitting the Eastern Commons PUD.
AFC Valley and Calvert Collision are seeking an amendment to the Eastern Commons PUD development plan to allow automotive collision repair. The proposal includes the demolition of 5,200 square feet of existing building and remodel of 20,100 square feet. An eight-foot tall masonry wall will also be constructed to block visibility to the public. On May 5th, the town commission held a public meeting hearing on the matter and voted 10-0 to forward the application to the town council with a negative recommendation. At the June 1 work session, the town council heard a presentation by the applicant as well as conducted a question and answer session with the applicant and town staff. The applicant has offered eight voluntary commitments that are included in the approved ordinance. The matter before the town council this time is to amend the Eastern Commons PUD development plan to allow automotive collision repair. If rezoned, the applicant will apply to the technical review committee for a development plan review. Once approved by the TRC, the plan then moves to the plan commission for review and approval. If the applicant feels bearings since are needed, it will then apply to the board of zoning appeals. Once all three steps are completed, the applicant will then apply for building permits. The recommended action is that the council approve ordinance 2021 Z05 amending the Eastern Commons PUD district.
I hate discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Boyer.
And this is probably directed more towards Neil Turpin or the planning commission because I really don't know what the discussion was there exactly. But there's, on page three, where it says the conservation of property values throughout this jurisdiction, it says that the rezoning could negatively affect the property values of the area. Under that, most of that arable use of this land in each district is bad. It says the proposed use for the subject site is not the most of arable use. But when you read the reports on random considerations, it's very interesting that item number three says that the rezoning is minimal compliance with the compromise plan will not negatively affect the property values. So I guess, how is that considered? Either it does or it doesn't. To me, it's not very clear. I guess maybe did some more, but Mr. Turpin's question is, why would it be affecting one page and not affecting on the other?
It was most likely a mistake. I would give credence to what he wrote in the bulk where he explained each of the five items and pay less attention to the consideration number three, which is rather just a summary and most likely mis-typed and it got overlooked. So I apologize for that confusion, but pay attention instead to the text within the five items.
Thank you.
Discussion. Discussion, Councilman Mustang.
I'm on the plan commission, and I can speak for myself on that. As we considered this, or as I considered this on the plan commission, and even now, so many times we were going back and forth on this. There was, in some ways, it's not really that bad, in other ways it doesn't fit. It's not out of compliance, but its consistency is minimal. It could mean certain aspects, but it really doesn't in other areas. It does not mean that Eastern Boulevard corridor lands development policy. There are so many, so many back and forth on this that, and I understand Neil's authoring of this document, and that in some ways it could, but it doesn't really. And I keep going back to when it was first set in motion, the PUD, it was not seen or was not included. And so now, all of a sudden, we are trying to put something in that, and I will say this because I said it in the public work session, we're almost, we're setting something in there that really doesn't fit the rest of the development. I will say this, Calvert Collision would be a great asset to Clarksville, would love to have it, but I'm really leaning towards it just doesn't fit there. And I will conclude my comments.
Discussion. Special, Councilman Gilkey.
Clarksville had a vision when we established the Eastern Boulevard corridor criteria, and the budget was established fit that vision. We had that vision for a reason. We wanted to develop the Eastern Boulevard corridor, bring it back to what the town once saw it to be and what we hope for it to be in the future. Mike said, this is a wonderful business, and there are any number of great locations in Clarksville they could go. This just is not the right location. You know, the comment about it meeting the criteria, it does not. That's why we have to ask for an amendment to the budget. And what we are deciding based on the recommendation of the plan commission is, do we want to hold true to the vision we had for Eastern Boulevard? Are we going to will away a little bit at a time and let it become something lesser than what we had hoped for? I would love to see Calvert located in Clarksville, and Ringo's County is a fantastic business. It's just not the right business for this location.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion that we deny the modification to.
Motion to deny from Councilman Gilkey. Is there a second? Second, Councilman Mustang to deny. Major Bailey will call vote, please.
For clarification, a vote of yes is to deny. A vote of yes is to deny. Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
Councilperson Boyer. President Rambin.
Aye.
The motion to deny is approved 6-0.
Move on to ordinance 2021 G08, admitting the nuance grass regulations and enforcement.
The town code provides the building commissioner with the authority to enforce excessive grass or weed growth and outlines the process for serving notice on the property owner to correct the issue. Currently, enforcement is not allowed until grass or weed growth exceeds 12 inches. The proposal is to decrease the height to 10 inches. Also, enforcement must be through personal service and certified mail. These processes often create problems if the property is vacant, the owner's look outside of the area, and/or the owner's roof using acceptance of the certified mail. The proposal is to adopt a provision of the Indiana code, which adds physical hosting of the property as a means of notifying the property owner. With this addition, the timeframe for obtaining owner compliance can be reduced, or in event of non-compliance, it allows the town to have the property maintained through its contractor in a quicker time. Staff recommendation is to approve ordinance 2021 G08, reviewed in previous ordinances and adopting new nuisance grass regulations and enforcement standards.
Mr. President, offer motion to adopt ordinance 2021 G. They are minutes.
Motion, Councilman Gilkey. A second, Councilwoman Henderson. A roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That item is approved on first reading, does require two readings.
Offer motion to approve on the second reading.
Motion, Councilman Gilkey, and a second, Councilman Mustang.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That item is approved 6-0.
Move on to Resolution 2021 R17 regarding the build operate transfer for South Clarksville streets.
of the former Berthold property and the adjacent properties. The street profiles have been completed and stormwater drainage study will be complete within the next two months. The traditional design bid build model for street construction normally takes 18 to 24 months, once all necessary runway is acquired. This timeline can be counter-served for two reasons, including cost overruns, including change orders, and time overruns, including weather, product availability, and end rations. In 1997, the state of Indiana adopted an alternative construction process known as build operate transfer, also known as a lot, that allows public-private partnership contracts, wherein a contractor is selected through a request to proposal qualification process. Through this process, a contractor and a town will reunite design for the streets in a maximum budget. The contractor goes to streets and once complete, turns over the ownership to the town for the agreed-on price. The process puts all responsibility on the contractor to stay within budget and meet development deadlines. In essence, this inflates the town from unforeseen price increases, change orders, and delays. The redevelopment commission will be the developer of the project and handle the RFQ, RFB issuance and review. They will enter into all contracts with the chosen contractor and be the end owner of the project. The town council must adopt the use of Indiana code 5-23, which authorizes the build operate transfer process. The council also authorizes the RDC to release and evaluate the RFB RFQ and enter into a contract for the completion of the project. This is the same type of a process that we are currently using for the construction of the new public works facility. Staff recommends that the council approve resolution 2021 R17, authorizing the use of the build operate transfer provisions of the construction of public streets and utility amenities within the public right of ways.
Motion, Councilwoman Boyer, and a second, Councilwoman Henderson. A roll call vote, please.
I've got a question for you there.
Discussion, Councilperson Hopper.
Are the deadlines placed on these types of build operate, uh, transfer contracts, are they, how do we configure those deadlines? Are they pretty much open-ended to where there's not a whole lot of air, or are they X, nothing?
We work with the chosen contractors through the RFQ or RFB process. We determine based upon an engineer's estimate how long it would take to complete it. We then get the same information from the selected contractor, and it would make sure that the timeframe falls within the time that we need the project completed by. If they cannot produce it within that certain amount of time, there can be provisions in there for penalties that they didn't get it completed, or that they owe us for those time overruns.
Right.
But yes, deadlines are set.
Okay.
And they're set ahead, and they're included in the contract that is signed.
Okay. What's the deadline on the contract we have on the public works facility? Do you have that?
It's December 31st, 2021.
The end of this year, December 31st.
Okay. All right. It's all handled.
Uh huh. Any further discussion? Proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
Councilperson Stone, or Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That item is approved 6-0.
Move on to Resolution 2021 R18, adopting electronic meeting standards.
Do you need that one too?
Somehow I've got many things, I think the county pulled in local items and didn't run right, so. Indiana General Assembly recently authorized units of local governments to allow electronic meeting attendance at meetings. If a governmental unit desires to allow electronic attendance, they must adopt procedures no less restrictive than those prescribed in the new law. The proposed resolution, the void tonight, provides the following. Electronic attendance can be counted for foreign purposes. Number two, a member attending electronically cannot participate in final action, meaning voting, unless they can be both seen and heard. A member must provide five calendar days' advance notice to give time to have the necessary equipment modifications to the council chambers, or to move the meeting to the executive conference room with appropriate advertising. Item three, at least one half or four members must be physically present in the council chambers. Number four, a single member cannot electronically attend more than 50% of the meetings in a calendar year unless certain exemptions apply, and a chart has been developed by AM to verify types of attendance. Number five, a member can attend two consecutive meetings electronically, but must physically attend at least one meeting between the consecutive meetings unless one of the exemptions apply. To clarify that, you could attend tonight's meeting, and you could attend the July 20th meeting electronically, both of them electronically, but then you would have to be present for the first meeting in August in order to not be present at the second meeting in August. So two electronically, one in person, two electronically, one in person, but then you have to watch out for the 50% requirement. Number six, a member must be physically present for certain actions of the council. And number seven, section 2.6, as I read, two through six, as I read above, apply if there is no declared emergency. This section applies when there is an emergency declared either by the governor or the town council president, in which case the rules are more relaxed, similar to those that we have been experiencing throughout COVID-19, and as were recently extended by the government to continue through the end of July. Council received additional information on that in a work session at the last council meeting, and the recommended action tonight is for the council to approve Resolution 2021 R18, adopting policy for electronic meeting attendance.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion, Councilwoman Henderson, and a second, Councilwoman Boyer.
Aye.
Discussion, Councilperson Hopper.
I feel like item number seven is the only item toward necessary to add at this particular time. I think there's a duty that's, it's incumbent upon us to be at the meetings. Our people that put us in these scenes obviously want us to be at those meetings. And I'm not really concerned that we have a problem with people being irresponsible or unaccountable, or not to stay home when they could be there. Obviously, COVID was a very extreme, never-before-seen situation, and we needed some things, as item 7 is plain, so if it's a declaration by the government or the state or whatever, then obviously we need to, we need to take action. So I guess this puts it in a place where we can take that action, but really, I hope we never see another COVID situation. But I guess it's necessary, but I just, I hate making rules that can, you know, be, I don't know, which electronic, I don't want to be there electronically, so hopefully the other group will get it added in my favor here, uh, because we had this, it was, it's all I have, so thank you.
Any further?
I have my other question.
We have.
Or do you have a motion?
Second.
Oh, you have a second.
Okay. Councilperson Boyer.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey.
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper.
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson.
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang.
Aye.
President Rambin.
Aye.
That is approved 6-0 as well.
Next, we have Resolution 2021 R18, requesting funds from DeClark, Foy County's Convention and Tourism Bureau.
The bureau collects innkeeper's tax on all hotels in the Bay County area. Revenues from the tax include reinvesting in the communities and counties through the use of grants. These grants are made by issuing bonds and pledging the revenues towards paying off of the bonds. In 2019, a fall for grant applications was made by the bureau. However, due to the onset of COVID-19, which drastically impacted terrorism and revenues from hotel stays, the bonds were not issued and the grants were not awarded. With the tourism industry picking back up, the issuance of the bonds has moved forward. The proposed resolution formally requests funding from the Tourism Bureau for the town's projects and improves the terms of the financing and interlocal cooperative agreement. The town's projects include $425,000 for the parklets along Main Street. In the agreement, you'll see that it does State Warner Avenue, but it is Main Street the document was written some time ago, pre-COVID. And $75,000 for South Clarksville Arts and Culture District. The issuance of the taxable bonds will not count against the town's $10 million annual limit on bank qualified debt, and they will not count against the town's indebtedness limitation. The Tourism Bureau intends to close on the issuance of the bonds in late July, making funding available to the town in August or September. Similar resolutions are being approved by the city of Jeffersonville and Foy County, who are also receiving grants through the bond issuance. Once the bonds are issued, or its information will be inserted into the agreement, and copies provided to each of the reporting parties. The recommended action is to approve Resolution 2021 R18, requesting funds from the Clark-Foy Convention and Tourism Bureau and improving the financing and interlocal cooperative agreement.
Motion to approve 2021 R18.
Motion, Councilman Gilkey, and a second, Councilman. Motion, Councilman Gilkey, the second, Councilwoman Henderson. A roll call, please. Councilperson Boyer?
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey?
Aye.
Councilperson Hopper?
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson?
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang?
Aye.
Council, uh, President Randt?
Aye.
That is approved, six zero. Next we have Resolution 2021 R20, improving the interlocal cooperation agreement with Floyd County for Bridge Number 51, Blackston Mill.
Careful with me as I pass you all the pages of the interlocal agreement. All right, Floyd County is responsible for the maintenance and when necessary, the replacement of the Blackston Mill Road Bridge over Silver. The county is completing the design phase of constructing and completing a new bridge with the alignment shifting to the east or upstream side of the existing bridge. This realignment will improve the geometry, which is the elevation change and curvature of the approaching rims. The new bridge will include wider lanes and sidewalks for pedestrians and bicycles. The county is responsible for 100% of the cost of the project and has received partial funding through KIFR. The next step in the process is acquiring the necessary land for the new bridge location. The acquisition will affect property line in Clarksville, New Albany, and the incorporated areas within Park County. Floyd County has enlisted the assistance of Greg Pfeiffer, Attorney with Applegate Pfeiffer and Floyd, for land acquisition services. The county is requesting that the town acquire those properties in Clarksville in its name, subject to the terms and conditions of the interlocal cooperative agreement. Similar agreements will be entered into with New Albany and Park County. The attached agreement outlines all responsibilities of the parties, contains a list of the parcels to be acquired in whole or in part and an aerial map of the project area. There are 10 properties in Clarksville that will require some type of temporary construction easement or purchase of permanent right of way. None of the properties in Clarksville will be a total per, a total purchase, I want to repeat that. None of the properties that are in Clarksville will be a total purchase. The town will not bear any costs of this project. Staff recommends council approve Resolution 2021 R20, approving the interlocal cooperative agreement with Floyd County for Bridge 51.
Motion to approve, 2021 R20.
Motion, Councilman Gilkey and the second, Councilman Hopper? A roll call, please. Uh, Councilperson Gilbert?
Gilkey. Gilbert.
What wonder the other, aye.
Councilperson Hopper?
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson?
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang?
Aye.
Councilperson Boyer?
Aye.
President Randt?
Aye.
That is approved, six zero. You see what happens when you have three weeks? Take your attention off of that. We, we've reached, the last item under new business resolution 2021 R21, approving the disposition of redevelopment commission property.
Um, at this time, I'm going to ask, um, Redevelopment Director and Blanford to come up and present. This item is part of the requirement of the redevelopment statute that we are using uh, for the disposition of this property that you present, uh, information to the council. It's on 20th, 21th of July. That or add, if they add the clarification, you can add lib or add additional information.
So, the Clark's redevelopment commission is acquiring property. It's been in South Clarksville for about four years. I intend to solve it into making the property available for future development. We now have significant amount of property down there. March 23rd, we issue a request proposal for makes use development in accordance with the SCM code, which is the South Clarksville Makes Use Zone Day Code. On June 22nd, we reviewed and discussed the only calls received and earlier today, the redevelopment commission met and voted to accept and approve that proposal. Um, now the next step is we need to do a very good presentation to give your blessing to dispose of the property, um, for the redevelopment commission to dispose of the property. So, um, I don't know if this might be able to, redevelopment commission is offering the property to Main Street. It makes the flood wall, it's not a part of the development area, for sale and development. Our request for proposals issued, receipt one proposal from the Denver Floyd, a real estate purchase acquired and developed a property. We just accepted it earlier today. Uh, it's going to be a multi purpose project. It actually includes graphics, please observe. It's going to have 164 Class A market rate, one bedroom apartments, 36 pound homes, all of which will overlook the river, downriver views, 9,000 square feet of street level retail space and a 4,300 square foot of rooftop restaurant. It's going to have pool and a parking garage and 238 parking spaces. Uh, it's going to require a combination of the property being offered by the redevelopment commission along with additional investment and also Denver Floyd developer will be obtained additional property to make their own investment toward the project. Some of the current streets have been made. The redevelopment commission is also constructing some new streets where the project is supported. Negotiations are ongoing for this development grant with Denver Floyd to bring the project to fruition. On behalf of the redevelopment commission, I ask for approval of Resolution 2021. Let me not cut it.
2021, Part 21.
Part 21, for the disposal of the property.
Motion. Yeah, motion of the council to have a discussion from Councilwoman Boyer.
I just want to say that it would be a great signal once again and bring a, um, a beautiful item in front of the council that should, um, come to fruition hopefully, based on their decision, um, and be wonderful for just all the residences of the South Clarksville area and north and mid Clarksville as well. So with that, I'll be the second after Mr. Gilkey.
Discussion, Councilman Gilkey?
No, I was going to say, but I, you don't do the, or second.
Second, Councilwoman Boyer? Councilman Mustang?
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
All right, uh, Councilperson Hopper?
Aye.
Councilperson Henderson?
Aye.
Councilperson Mustang?
Aye.
Councilperson Boyer?
Aye.
Councilperson Gilkey?
Aye.
President Randt?
Aye.
That is approved, six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Gilkey. We'll be done by Friday.
Are you interested?
I sincerely hope so.
The interest is tempered for me. We'll move on to clerk treasurer and department reports. Does anyone have anything, this statement, like the red lady, have a soul?
Chris, did you start guessing?
That's what. Got Chief Palmer?
Okay. And if you know.
Name it?
No, there are, there are any votes with your names on them. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Councilperson Stonecifer is not here tonight. He is one who has advocated for the council, uh, staff putting together a employee's benefit statement uh, that provides our employees with, uh, what their true benefits are that they receive from the town. Not only their wages, but their, uh, the benefits, the cost for healthcare, um, the days, you know, the vacation days, all that that's included into their, uh, their employment package. Uh, our staff working with Sher Partners, who is our healthcare benefits coordinator, uh, our healthcare third party administrator, has come up, um, with what you have in front of you. Uh, these are your individual statements. Uh, our employees will receive similar statements to these. They will be hand delivered to them this week in their respective departments. Uh, I'm not going to go through the details of each one of those. Uh, this item went through at least five different modifications, changes, uh, before it ran them at the staff's approval. And, uh, again, working with the Sher Partners, who were able to put this together. And like I said, uh, department, uh, each, uh, employee will be receiving these this week uh, from their department heads and or their administrative staff. So, wanted you to have yours first and so they'll be going out this week.
Are they already enveloped?
Are they already enveloped?
Yes.
Yes.
I was going to suggest security envelopes. I just had to ask. Suggest what? Security envelopes. Right.
The, the only people who are going to see these would be a department head and the administrative person within that department, so they would already have access to that information. Um, yeah, it has to.
Public record too. Yes.
It is public record too, so.
You stole my comment.
Yeah, there is no underlying information on here that, uh, would not be made available on a request of record, so. Um, hopefully, uh, I, I actually scanned and emailed these to him before the meeting. I don't know if he had a chance to look at it, but, uh, hopefully this leaves with everything he will give to these, so.
It is, it's very clean.
Chief Palmer?
I'm going to do now, because first off, now where tire dollars were started on the regular fast lane last week. We had two coming along on this Thursday, this patient, one to six, and then a few more right after that. Also, we kicked off a white patrol this weekend, uh, strong presence, resulted in three arrests this whole weekend. Um, I think it took people by surprise and, uh, definitely people with market by surprise. So, I'm glad you don't start off with a bang. It's part of funding their tenant, um, but successful and continue on. So we've got to schedule for the next three months out and then, uh, we'll start mixing up the schedule. We're making a run on it, so that's all I have.
All right, Lighter?
So, we actually have Jim Walton from Brand Acceleration at Brown. He's going to be filling out the town Clarksville's redevelopment commission websites, websites. Jim, do you want to just stand up real quick? So, he might be reaching out to you in the next couple of days, um, just to, just touch base, talk, talk all things Clarksville again, so that, you know, sort of put together the best product possible.
Yeah, I'm here to learn your story. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else? Move on to council comments, Councilman Hopper?
Well, for July, I love, uh, pretty easy, pretty good, uh, pretty good board, uh, a lot, a lot of farmers and we kind of seem like, uh, them to come. Pretty noisy this year, which is good, so I kind of like that. But, uh, anyway, I, I just appreciate the, when I drive down the streets, I, I see, I see developments going on, I see nice, uh, the, the projects that we've done and it looks, they look very nice and I'm just, uh, proud of the Clarksville and the staff and, uh, department heads for, for doing that job. Appreciate it, guys. And, uh, just a good place to be. I got one little thing on the Eastern Boulevard, someone asked me the other day. It was two years ago, I was on the plan commission and we approved a strip, a little strip building. I don't know, Jake, if you have a remember, uh, between Resha's and the lawyer's office. But I, I liked it, that little strip right there. Well, some, they were going to shorten the buildings, make a little parking out front, make it look real nice. Well, they came out, they dug a hole in front of it, it's, it's gravel up there and it's been sapped for two and a half years. You know where it's at, Tom.
No example.
Anyway, I was just wondering if that's a dead project and I know a lot of things about it, but.
As far as I know, that project is dead, that, that, the hole that you're talking about, I know what that was associated with some, um, investigation to try to determine infrastructure location for stormwater, that we need to install some new infrastructure. And, yeah, either way, the project as far as I know is, is pretty good. We need to get them to clean up that mess.
Yeah, we need to, we need to clean that little mess up because it just, like I said, it's gone a few years, two and a half years.
I think the money to finance that project is at the bottom of that hole.
It would be nice, that'd be a nice old crystal puzzle, but, but, you know, that's all I have to ask.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Uh, yes, I, I just want to give my feelings to Norman Rogers family, um, and those, very close friends there, so. Also, I had a constituent ask me about some parking in Blackston Heights. So I reached out to Ray Cummings, the street department and asked him, questioned him about the parking on the course together. And so, um, after a bit of discussion, um, my pup actually went out and his staff paint yellow on the curbs to keep the parking so close to the stop signs. Uh, there was a slight interest in the neighbors there that when everybody's parked, there can't be any ambulances or fire lights making turns. So I want to say from the, from the people, because they've already noticed it, this has been done, maybe done on Friday and it's beautiful and they're very, very happy about it. So, thank you so much for your time and effort that you put in last week for that, for the holiday. It means a lot to those folks as well as the rest of us. So, thank you very much. And that's all.
Councilman Mustang?
Uh, have a question for staff. Who is in charge of the, uh, marquee out front, keeping that properly with some type of information?
Everybody's looking at it.
Well, let me, without calling names, let me just, let me just make my point. Uh, that marquee seems to be blank a lot of the time. I'm going to look at Kevin, so I don't have to look at anyone in particular. Uh, that marquee seems to be blank, uh, quite frequently. I know we had, uh, uh, Memorial Day and there was nothing about the Memorial Day on that. And I've noticed it, uh, since then quite a bit and it, and it is empty. Even if we get back to putting the next council meeting under something, but, but we need to be, I think we need to be creative and informative with that. There are businesses in Clarksville that would love to have a sign right where that is and we have a sign and we're not using it, so, uh, or it doesn't seem like we're, we're using it to our maximum benefit. And I'm not saying give it to, uh, any businesses in town, but we really need to consider that. Um, I had to, I had to bring it up again, but I really, I'm still getting calls from, uh, folks in the neighborhood about crosswalk across progressway. Uh, obviously, we've talked about that, but I have another suggestion. Can we talk the parks department into allowing us to put a light pole up at that where their road comes out and at least maybe get our, uh, street department to wheelchair area signs up in the area. There, there are too many near misses along that way. And I understand we can't be in this, we can't be buying property, we can't, we've got a whole lot of reasons for not doing, uh, something, but I really think that we can at least put a light up, maybe put some signs up, we don't have, uh, that, I'm talking of street light, not, uh, stoplight. Uh, again, a condolences to Norman Rogers family and friends. I just cannot imagine, uh, the families affected by the condo collapse in Florida. Uh, two last things. I, again, wanted to reiterate that I am proud that we as a community and municipality were able to secure $750,000 in funding, uh, to keep our business community alive throughout COVID. And then finally, Chief Palmer, I heard some complaints about getting ticketed for speed and disregarding stop signs and I want to say thank you. Thank you for stepping that up and, uh, thank you for the warnings that were issued and the tickets that were issued were deserving, so, uh, we hear, we hear it and, and it's much appreciated.
Director Collin?
Uh, in regards to the sign out front, up until this week or last week, no one was really responsible for the sign. It kind of was done by parks, it was done by kind of whoever had a message, so it kind of didn't have someone to be in charge of it. Uh, part of it's broken, it's damaged, some of the lighting doesn't work. Um, the springs that hold the sign up so you can change the letters don't really work, so it falls on your head. But, uh, I've actually had discussions with redevelopment director, Nick.
Just say Nick.
Nick. Actually replacing the whole sign and maybe doing some sort of digital sign, something to where it can be updated constantly. Even if we're at home in the middle of the night, we can get it on the computer or change it, so we're working on that. But we will get something on the marquee until then.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate that and thank you. Be very careful because we have a, an order list that deals with electronic signs. Yeah. We mentioned. Chief, Chief, I have those nominations of those electronic signs and how frequent. Chief, I, Chief, I have this conversation about electronic signs and how frequently they can and can change. Um, it may be a stretch, and we'll have to take a look at it, but this may be considered as a means of communication to the public that which allows, uh, will allow some of the use of our, uh, hey, I don't think we need for, but we're going to those final rules already, so. And if you will notice, we also have some street lights out there on, um, that section of Broadway between there and the entrance into Target. Uh, those were hit by a boring company, um, and the electric company has to come in and make those repairs. They have to replace that entire, the runs up all the way on the veteran. So, unfortunately, half of the sign works out front when it's lit up. It's, we don't understand why, but only half of it works.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, I love all the flags hanging everywhere, it's beautiful. Thank you to the street department for all of that. Um, what the, I, I just want to comment on my comment. We have a road named Progress Way, but there is no written Progress Way. I'd like to see, and, and, and I, I know all of us see the people struggle to get across the street, and, and it really does, it's really hurtful to see. I'd like to see where we can have a crosswalk where they can just push a button, you know, and a red light comes up to get them from that back lot across to the community center, you know, and then they, you know, make their way over to Walmart and stay out.
We actually had a discussion last week with the engineering firm who has, uh, taken the Progress Way project to about a twenty-five or thirty percent design, and we are re-engaging them to, uh, bring that project back on forefront for the redevelopment commission, and we'll be bringing it to them at the July meeting, um, and so all those things will be taken into consideration. The majority of time, what I see when I'm in that area is that people are coming out of the back driveway of Yellwood. They cross the street, but are still continuing to cross to the sidewalk. They run down the street parallel and come back into town camp, uh, town campus driveway, or they run down to San Quinn instead of using the sidewalk. Um, I understand that crossing is a danger, but if they were cross and not run in traffic, it would be less, um, uh, a problem for them. But we will take a look and see if there's something temporary that we can put up.
Yeah, something like this direction, like, or for the.
They ask, if we installed the sidewalk, that would get them running the street through the sidewalk, but they don't use it.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to our chiefs and all our directors, department heads, and all their staff, you guys are amazing.
Councilman Gilkey.
They're going to get big heads.
Egg out, egg out.
The town routinely has a Fourth of July, uh, concert, which, of course, we did not have this year, and regrettably, the, uh, two thousand and nineteen concert didn't make it up on the, uh, the website, uh, for viewing. I understand we're, we're still going to try to get it up.
It is up.
It, okay, I looked this afternoon and, and seen it. Um, St. Anthony's, uh, held its own independence, uh, the Fourth of July concert, that, that parallel very much, uh, with the, uh, the town that is done. And for those who were interested in watching the video of that, it is up on, uh, my personal YouTube channel. Now, a word of caution, uh, there are two young youngies, one of them has a very strange haircut and used to work for search through Soleil. My haircut's different from his, so you can tell it's a part, if you go up and look, believe me. It's not our decision. I'll let it go at that.
May I, may I, we are a man, council chambers, correct?
Yes, we are, we're actually just going to have one item for, uh, discussion tonight, uh, and you should be out with him on ten minutes after you've, uh, brought that meeting to work, so.
Well.
I heard that.
All right, so, for those of you who are joining us this evening via phone, if you want to, uh, continue to be with us during the work session, you can remain on the line. We will get started here very shortly, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.